And we have an action item. Authorization for the city administrator to execute a certain settlement agreement as recommended by the city's litigation attorneys and authorization for litigation attorneys and city administrator to continue the settlement negotiations related to pending claims. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, motion passes. And, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sub move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Public Hearing to Order. Please know that we have acknowledged that both the press and the public have been duly notified in according this hearing for the Freedom of Information Act. The purpose of this reading is the second reading of ordinance 2017-07 and ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning, Article VIII, Flood Damage Prevention of the City of Owl Palms Code of Ordinances to provide a definition for the referenced datum to be used for the base flood elevation shown on the flood insurance rate maps, firm otherwise known, and to provide for a minimum elevation for residential and non-residential construction. And Douglas left.
No, he's right here, but I think you can go ahead and mention that.
And we're going to read the second one. And the second one we're going to attend to right after that is the second reading of ordinance 2017-09 and ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning of the City of Owl Palms Code of Ordinances to provide that all new construction or substantial improvement shall be connected to public sewer where a public sewer line is located within 150 feet and to reduce the lot coverage requirements and floor area requirements for lots with septic tanks. And the best thing to do is to turn it over to Douglas to better explain this in layman's terms.
Okay. Thank you very much. And if nobody objects, I'll talk about both of the ordinances and then get out of the way and let the public have their comments. Both of these issues are coming from the planning commission. These are issues that were volleyed to the planning commission by city council for their input. The planning commission worked on both of them for a good deal of time, and these are recommendations coming back from the planning commission. The first one is fairly simple in what it does. And this ordinance is dealing with the flood damage prevention code, and it is really being done in anticipation of new flood maps coming out. FEMA has put the city on notice that new flood maps have been developed. They are currently, FEMA is in their, in their public comment period on those maps. And they have roughly told us that at the end of 2018, they are expecting to pass those to us for final adoption. And what pretty much anybody who sees these maps is struck by is the fact that the required elevation of the new maps is significantly lower than what the city has traditionally had. In 1991, after Hurricane Hugo, the flood maps, the elevation required for houses increased dramatically. Went up to, on some parts of the island, to 21 feet. And the lowest elevation on the island is currently 13 feet, but we add a foot. So the lowest current requirement is 14 feet above sea level. These new maps came out, and they have large portions of the island that are outside of the flood zone entirely. Really second and third row houses are not in a flood zone at all according to these maps. So that would allow people to build right on the ground. Even the highest flood zone requirements are in the 10 or 11-foot requirement. So it is a dramatic reduction in the required elevation. People who were here during Hurricane Hugo know that the waters were higher than that, and there was concern about that. So that's what really caused the issue to go back to the planning commission. And the planning commission's proposal is fairly simple. It basically would create an elevation requirement of 14 feet and say regardless of what the future maps say, we don't think it's wise, and we would legislate that no house be built with a lowest floor that is lower than 14 feet. One of the confusing parts of this is FEMA is changing the vertical datum and how they measure elevation. They're going from NGVD 29, which is the old method of surveying, and that's really what, if you have an elevation certificate on your house, it would all be done in 29 datum. They're changing that to 1988 datum, which has the effect of changing it one foot. So there's going to be a lot of confusion in the future about, you know, which vertical datum are you referencing? Is it the old way or the new way? So the definitions that you have also address that, this change in vertical datum from 29 to 88. And like I said, it's roughly a foot. It's very close to a foot that they changed. So this new requirement would be 14 feet under NGVD 29 or 13 feet under NAVD 88, which roughly are the same elevation. So that's the flood changes in a nutshell. The other changes are dealing with septic systems. And as I said, this was a, dealing with potentially extending sewer lines and minimizing septic systems was an issue that was handed to the planning commission by city council. The planning commission spent a lot of time on it, and there are, in addition to this ordinance that's receiving first reading, there are other companion ordinances, but because they're not in the zoning section of the code, they do not require a public hearing, so that's why they're not on this agenda, but they are on the following agenda. This code changes, has three very important changes. The first would be that the code would require somebody building a new home or substantially improving a home, which is, which means doing more than half the value of the house in improvements. If you were to, if an owner were to do that, and there was a sewer line, a gravity-operated sewer line within 150 feet of that property, this code would require that that owner extend that line. And I will say that 150 feet, there are not going to be a lot of properties that are going to fit into that category. 150 feet, you know, it's obviously not very far-reaching, but the reason for that was that there was not a lot of cost data available to the planning commission. It was hard to get a lot of good examples of what the cost to do that extension would be. We had some examples of kind of 400, 500-foot extensions and extensions that dealt with four or five properties, but not these shorter extensions. So that was really, it was intentionally set low to begin with with the idea that over the years, we would get some examples. And we may consider if it works well, extending that to be a farther distance with the idea that over time, the sewer system would grow and eventually cover larger parts of the island. That's the first major change. The second major change deals with the size of the house that could be built and tied into a septic system. Under the current code, there is a limit that's established at 40% of the lot area. So a quick example, if a 10,000-square-foot house, I'm sorry, 10,000-square-foot lot, the largest house you could build would be 4,000 square feet of heated space on that lot. This change would reduce that for a house that's dealing, that is going to tie into a septic system to 30% of that. So in that same example, the biggest house you could build would be a 3,000-square-foot house on a 10,000-square-foot lot. And the rationale for that is obviously these septic systems need space to operate, and the larger the house, the more the waste that you would be trying to process through that septic system. So that was really the logic of distinguishing a house size from a house tied into sewer from one tied into septic. The second one is different, but I'm sorry, the third point is a slightly different point, but it gets at the same, it gets at the same matter, and that is reducing the amount of lot coverage allowed for a house tying into a septic system. And that reduction also would go from 40% to 30%. So a 10,000-square-foot lot, you could only cover 3,000 square foot. There are some other, I would say, definitions, and there's a lot of stuff in there, but those are the three really meaningful changes in that. So that is it, and I'll turn the floor.
So you will make sure that you say that the public comment now is just related to these two ordinances?
So do we have any public comments related to these two ordinances? Yes, ma'am, please. Come up front and state your name and address. Marie likes to get everything just right.
My name's Paula Bana. I live at 704 Cameron Boulevard. And one thing you brought up that I didn't realize was if new maps come out at the end of the year, say that you don't be in a flood zone anymore, because I think I'm innocent enough, why would you not let me then not have? And that means I would have to pay high insurance. Why would you still make an elevation of that property when it doesn't need one? If people making a map are saying it's high enough, why can't I go along with that reasoning? You see what I'm saying? I think I have a high lot. I heard from a friend that on House 40, that Hurricane Hugo goes just a couple inches of water in the house. Pay a lot of flood insurance. If all of a sudden these maps by experts have been changed, then why can't we go with what they're suggesting?
So I'm not supposed to respond to you?
I'm supposed to take the input.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jim Wright, 3904 Cameron Boulevard. I've spent my career dealing with DEHAC in septic systems and zoning and rezoning of commercial properties. By way of disclosure, I mean, the new flood maps are going to save me some money because I live on third row. So I've been paying for a V-zone elevation for many years. So I was going to, I'm going to save money because I'm going to be out of a V-zone on third row. So I think that's good. But, and I just say that out of the way of disclosure, but I think it's dangerous when a city or municipality or government entity decides that they know more than FEMA. And I think that she makes a good point, that you've got experts that are saying that you only need to build at a certain elevation. So it's my understanding and by way of disclosure, I mean, I am a professional, I've been in the business for a long time. The new maps are to be more site-specific based on a topographical map rather than a zip code. So there may be areas on the island where you could build on great, okay? And that it would be perfectly fine. So I just think that the city is dangerous when the city, if the goal was to slow down development, that's a whole different can of worms or whatever, but I just think it's dangerous when a city or municipality thinks that they know more than the experts. And, you know, I'm fortunate or blessed to have been lived here five years before Hugo. But, you know, FEMA keeps a record of each address and the flood losses for each address. And, you know, the new maps are supposed to be more specific to a particular address. So that being said, you, you know, you're going to vote up or down or whatever, and I'm all for nobody losing anything because it's devastating when you see somebody lose everything they own because they got four feet of water in the house. So I'm all for protecting, you know, the individuals on buildings. So that's what I have to say on flood insurance for what it's worth. On the septic system, you know, that's all lot-specific, and it's really a soil analysis situation. Either a lot either supports or does not support a septic system. And that's why we have DEHAC, and that's what DEHAC is for. Now, are there areas on the island that maybe never should have been built and never should have had a septic system on them? Probably so, okay? But they exist, okay? So according to DEHAC, if you've ever had a septic system, they can never deny a septic system for that particular location. But I just think that either a lot supports a septic system and it's working properly or it's not. And I just think, again, we're going through dangerous territory when we say that we're going to go over and above what the FEMA regulations are. And I'm not sure what the code says now. We're changing it to within 150 feet of your house. I thought, maybe I'm wrong, the code was right in front of you. You know, that if it's in front of you, you have to tie in. Now we're going to 150 feet. Is next year going to be 300 feet? You know, either your property supports or doesn't support a septic system. So that's really what I have to say. It may not make any sense, but that's my comments. I mean, I live on the island, I feel fortunate to live on the island. My flood insurance is going down, and that's a good thing in my eyes, okay? But, and nobody wants anybody to come out here and build lower than they should build. But, you know, I just think it's dangerous when a city or municipality, and I've dealt with the city of Matt Pleasant, Charleston County, and I spent two years now up in St. George. And I just think that it's, I spent my career doing it. And I mean, that's what we have FEMA, and that's what we have rules and regulations for. So for what it's worth, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? David.
My name's David Cohen. I live at 3504 Cameron Boulevard. From the DEHAC website, last year, 511,000 gallons of raw sewage was lost from municipal sewer systems. That's much better than the previous year, where 9.8 million gallons. Environmentally, on-site septic systems or municipal sewer systems, you can look on, you can do research, and you'll find arguments both ways. DEHAC has determined that an on-site septic system is a safe alternative, environmentally safe alternative to a municipal system. Why should we be second-guessing DEHAC? I first moved to Owl Palms in 1982. I rented at several addresses before settling at 3504 Cameron in 1990. One of the reasons I picked the lot I did was it was on an on-site septic system and was not tied to the city sewer system. Over the 30-plus years that I've lived at that site, and I've had to do repairs to the system, has it leaked? Probably so. I don't want to go into that, but having personal experience of going into a property on a municipal system that has failed, and when not only your sewage, but the sewage of all the neighbors that are around you backs up into your house, I'd much rather have the issues I've experienced with an on-site system. All I'm asking is that you let the residents have a choice of what they want. Do not extend the current regulations to the 150 feet, but leave it as to if it's a butt to the property. In preference, I'd rather have no requirement. I'm not required to tie to city water, electric. I could choose methods around those, but I choose those services. I do not want to choose a septic, a municipal septic, or municipal sewer system. As far as lot coverage, I would do agree that considering the on-site septic system as part of the impervious area of the lot would be a much better solution than arbitrary 30%. Just consider the area that is wired by this to the on-site system as part of your pervious material. As far as changing the size of the houses, while I do agree that 40% is pretty excessive, that 30 or 35% would be a better idea, I don't think you should be penalizing septic owners based on just the fact that they have a septic system. And I'll agree with what was kind of said earlier, if a lot supports a house of 4,000 square foot on a 10,000-square-foot lot, and you can fit a septic system on it, they should be allowed to do it unless we change our regulations across the island. Now to move to the other ordinance, 2017-07. Again, why are we second-guessing the experts at FEMA? While this would not affect me personally, my house was built higher than the current regulations required, that was a choice I made. I considered the height of my house, how many steps I had to climb, I'm getting older, how many steps do I want to go up? Luckily, my lot and the house I chose fit very well. If I had been at a lower elevation, I may not have been able to go as high above the flood requirements. After Hurricane Hugo, I worked volunteering through one of the local churches, and I went in many houses on this island that had three to five feet of water in them. A lot of those houses are still standing on this island that were repaired and fixed. That's a homeowner's decision of taking the risk of having a house flood. FEMA gives them the information. Let's leave it to the homeowners and go with the experts at FEMA and leave the minimum height to what FEMA recommends. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, this ends our public hearing. Thank you. And we have council starting right now.
I'd go ahead and get them on the phone before we.
Okay.
We'll get them on hold.
We've got some technical stuff we're going to put on the phone, and they're going to hold for us. So give us one second before we get started.
Yes, Ashton Goleenbo. Hey Ashton, this is us, and then I'll put you on hold. We're starting the city council meeting. We'll switch either way. I'll put you on when it's time for city council comments.
Okay, city council is going to begin. This is our welcome all. This is the first city council of 2018. So thank you all for coming. Please note that both the press and the public were duly notified according to the Freedom of Information Act. The first thing we'll do is our endification, where everybody, please stand. Oh Lord, thank you for everything you have blessed us with. Thank you for this world at which we live, and we help and ask that you give us guidance in how we make decisions that affect our residents and our community for the future. We ask that you look after our military overseas and our public safety officials here who protect us 24/7. We thank you again for what we have and where we live, and ask us to please guide us again in our future and how we make these decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Marie.
I'm just going to go down the road. Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember DeHorn.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Wright. Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And a 30-hour six.
Okay, thank you. The first order of business tonight is the election of a mayor pro town. Do I hear any nominations? I hear music.
Wow.
Yes, sir?
I'll nominate Jimmy Ward.
We have a nomination. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Second order of business, or third order of business, is the reading of our journals of previous meetings. November 28, 2017, December 5, 2017, January 2 inauguration, 2018, and special council meeting, January 2, 2018.
I move to approve.
We have a second. Any changes? All in favor?
Oh.
On the, on our special council meeting that was included from last week, I was hoping for an addition of, in Mr., our consultant from the, on the beach renourishment.
Steve Trainor.
Trainor, yes. I couldn't go back and look exactly because the video wasn't up, I don't believe, but he mentioned something that I think would be important maybe for future discussion about the amount of time it takes, it typically takes for drifting sand to make it to breach inlet. And I'd like to see that reflected in the minutes.
So let me just be clear that the special meeting minutes will be up for approval in the February meeting. So they're not included in this group. You were provided with them so that.
It's okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, fun part. Swearing in new employees. I'd like to have Joshua Keaton up front. Repeat after me, and when I say aye, I didn't say your name.
Ms. Keaton.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the city of Owl Palms.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the ordinances of the city of Owl Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
And that I will, to the best of my abilities, perform the duties, discharge therefore thereof, so help me God.
Very good. Joshua, thank you, welcome aboard. Joshua's going to our recreation department in October as the parks and facilities specialist. He lives in Goose Creek, and loves playing sports, lifting weights, and nutrition. He has a degree in canology? Kidneology? Exercise science, let's keep it that way for me. And before coming to Owl Palms, worked at James Madison University where he managed facilities, including the basketball arena. Welcome to Owl Palms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make a motion for all of them.
I'm going to say aye, just say Weston Smith. Aye.
Aye, Weston Smith.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances of the city of Owl Palms.
According to the ordinances of the city of Owl Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of the position that I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Thank you, welcome. Weston joins our recreation department as one of our new recreation supervisors. Weston and his wife Maggie became the proud parents of an adorable baby girl, Ruthie. She was born on December 20. So the adventure of parenthood begins. Weston has a degree in parks and recreation management, enjoys fly fishing, competitive sports, and prior to coming to Owl Palms, he worked at the Kiwal Island Golf Resort. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Hey Steve, how you doing?
Good, very nice to see you.
Thank you. Okay, after I say aye, say your name. Aye.
Aye, Stephen El.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
According to the ordinances of the city of Isle Palms
According to the ordinances of the city of Isle Palms
To perform the duties of the position of which I have been selected
To perform the duties of the position of which I have been selected
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Ah, thank you. Stephen joined Isle Palms Fire Department on June 26. He is married and has a young son, Stephen, and resides in Summerbuild. Stephen is an active member of the Army National Guard and comes to Isle Palms with experience that he can, recently employed by the city of Hanhan as a firefighter and EMT. And this is your wife?
Yes, sir.
And her name?
Forrest.
Forrest Pleiser. All right, good. Welcome to Isle Palms.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept all three of these new employees.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Citizens' comments. Now, yes.
So while we're getting them on the phone, this is a request for city sponsored event status from HDTV. They wish to do a filming of beachfront bargain hunt renovation. Some of the council members will recall that we had some HDTV work done on the island before, and it was a successful experience with low impact and we were pleased with the end product when it aired. So this is a new project from HDTV and we have on the phone, I believe Ashton's there?
Hello?
Good, yeah. And we, we have spared them making a trip from New York City to here, but they're here to answer questions and to explain their, their project. So Ashton, it's up to you to address council now.
Hi, we also have the producer Gabby here, and I do apologize if it's a little bit difficult to hear you guys. I don't know if it's difficult to hear us.
I think everybody can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Oh, yes, so like I said, my name is Gabby, and this is what's going to be coming down, of course, all comments required and permitting to kind of film this episode. So I'd love to kind of just explain to you what we do as a show and kind of who we are. And of course, if you guys have any questions along the way, just call or write me, give me a shout, and we can kind of, you know, I can carry questions through my path. But, you know, first and foremost, I think one of the kinds that we, we have been in the area before, our sister show was that we, this show called Beachfront Bargain Hunt. What we are is a spinoff show called Beachfront Bargain Hunt Renovation. So as you can imagine, this first half of this show, when you guys have seen any kind of HDTV shows, it just will highlight on the area and homes that are supposed to be on the market. So what we do is we work with a local family or, you know, one single person, and in this case, it's a woman by the name of Wendy and her son Michelle, who, you know, will be kind of exploring Isle Palms and actually will happen to GoToIsland too. So, you know, we'll kind of work with them on finding comparable homes and things like that to show people what are on the market. In addition to that, of course, we do love to highlight the best areas and aspects of the town on the visit. So we'll get beauty shots of, you know, signs of the town, and, you know, we have people that know how much they love the area, why people come, people like such a desired location in South Carolina. You know, on through, on top of all that, is a very small group. We have, of course, through, there's the inaction, and then we actually have only two cameramen, a couple women, and we also have a couple other assistants that, you know, help this go off. Traveling through really small mini bands, we, we're not a crazy day production. I feel like people here, TV show, and they think that we're going to spin and film like the next Oscar award winning film, which we definitely don't. But what we do is, you know, we, we travel from typically private location to private location, things like restaurants, you know, local hotspots, maybe, you know, county parks where it's having beaches and stuff like that. You know, we, we kind of film scenes that are very quick and, you know, take us the very most, about an hour to film. We don't, you know, bog down streets or require any closures or anything crazy like that. We like to consider ourselves to be private on the wall and try to say how people care. So I'm not sure if you guys want the exact dates quite yet, but the date that we're looking to film, our first set of dates are very 11, 12, 13. So almost four days, that's the people shoot date for us, typically lasts about 12 hours, like to work, you know, sun up, sun down kind of thing, and that being said, you know, like I was thinking a lot ago, you know, we, we are not very obstructive or focused on anybody's eyes in the areas that we're in. We kind of go around and just try and capture, you know, the beauty of all the areas that we film. Our initial shoot dates are when we get the majority of the houses moved done. So that's the house hunting, that's the working with the agent and the family, supporting private property, and kind of, you know, working with local other agents and HOAs and stuff like that, which kind of, you know, feature house that are actually on the market. In addition to this shoot, this four day shoot, what we will also do is, since this is a renovation show, but please try and do it very quickly with any contractor that is working on that episode and this phone number. We'll coordinate these on when we come back and, of course, if there's any local ordinances or people on the island know, working before 9:00 AM, those things, those are all very quick to serve and help somebody, and it's loud or much. You know, we work with locals and, you know, keep up with any kind of rules regulations there might be. Those passes are typically what we call passes days, the renovation days that we track, but, you know, they're not just on private property, they're on the family, the woman Wendy, it's going to be on her, her home, whichever one she ends up Um, so, you know, it's, it's very, we try and stay really quiet and not bother anybody, but the final product is, of course, to just feature this often home renovation in the coolest beach towns all around America, so Isle Palm passes is one of the ones that we like to feature.
Ashton, thank you. When you were here last time, I, I never saw you all, so it was very low impact.
Yeah.
And I think you said there's going to be another follow-up. How many times do you think you will be coming here to do this? This is Mayor Jimmy Carroll?
Yes, I mean, it typically, I, you know, I keep saying quiet on the wall because we, we don't make people do a turn amount of shoot days. You know, if a renovation takes eight days for them to do everything that they need in the house, then how many days initial four days? Because it's constantly be, you know, eight days, it could be, if it's a bigger project or it, you know, maybe hit a couple hiccups, it could be, I don't know, ten days. We never do more than 10 additional days, and on all of those dates that we do turn, you know, since it is a renovation, it'll be like, hey, you know, we, you know, the wall fell down and we have to fix it tomorrow, so we'll send someone that next day. On those shoots, we actually only see people that go down on those shoots. So it's even less, even, you know, it's less Yeah, it's usually a single camera guy and sort of someone helping him out, so it's, it's a really like, a little kind of crew. And on all those dates, we can always shoot you guys an email, hey, we're going to be back in town, or, you know, hey, we, we are looking to shoot on the beach in a week again, to just get a couple good sound bites or pretty shots of the beach when we do that. You know, those kind of things. We thank you guys very much, and we'll work at town very closely, throughout the entire process. So, you know, to answer your question shortly, it could be anywhere between, you know, no more than 10 days, I would say, after the initial four day shoot.
Let me see if there's any questions from our council.
Did I hear her say they were planning to go to GoToIsland?
Yes.
And does she, I just want to make sure they understand they have to get there by boat.
Yes, I have been dialoguing back and forth with them and made them aware of GoTo, and also the jurisdiction that GoToIsland is in is county government. I've provided those names and phone numbers, in addition to Don Thompson, who's kind of a point person on GoToIsland as well.
And of course, knowing that you've talked to Linda and to Desiree, you know all about the insurances and stuff that are required.
They've already taken care of that.
So I think we're in good shape there.
They've already satisfied.
Yeah, we've been sending the certificate of insurance back and forth and kind of making any applicable, you know, operations that they
Make a motion.
Any other questions?
I move that we support the request.
We have a motion to support and a second. Any discussion? Oh, one quick little thing. It always makes Isle Palms look good. We want positive images for Isle Palms. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it. You have your show.
Okay, so the insurance certificate looks good. You have to work with Douglas Carr's office on your fee and license, but I know that you guys have all of that information and the contact people, so just let us know when you get into town.
Awesome.
Thank you all very much. Okay, do we have any other citizens' comments?
Good evening. I'm Bob Miller, 3 Fairway Village Lane, Wild Dunes. And first, let me congratulate the mayor and the new council people. Very well, well done. So congrats and best wishes to you. I represent a group of six people who came together recently since we were all concerned about the coyote situation. And we decided to act as, try to act as catalysts to convince both Wild Dunes Community Association and the city of Isle Palms that a much more aggressive strategy is needed to combat the coyote issue. The name of the group, we call ourselves the Wild Dune and IOP Coyote Control Coalition. Here with me tonight are two members, Sally Weisman and Judy Gogle, who'll be speaking in a minute. We're committed to work with IOP Council and Wild Dunes Community Association Board, which we've met with as well. We have 268 signatures of residents who have signed and they support aggressively controlling the coyote population. And that's when a lot of people aren't even here. So our ask of city council is that, we ask that you work closely with Wild Dunes Community Association with common goals and a coordinated approach. So I think we'll be a lot more effective if we all work together in this thing. Implement an aggressive trapping strategy across the entire island of Isle Palms. And actively engage the community to raise awareness and educate both sides, both residents and visitors alike. By the way, we haven't seen any press releases for the two meetings coming up, one on February 1st and one on February 22nd. I don't know if that's being planned, press releases or advertising, but we want to get as many people there, I would imagine you do too.
Absolutely, we do.
So that would be our third ask tonight. And what we'll do is we have a full position paper that we will distribute electronically tomorrow, and it's just too much to read tonight, and so we thought we'd save you from that. And we will also make ourselves available if anytime you want to meet or talk or try to figure out more of what we're doing in between council meetings or at council meetings, however you'd like to do that. So we're very available, very passionate about this. Through a great deal of research on relevant coyote issues across the country and locally with Sullivan's Island and Mount Pleasant, and we have developed our positions and included them in the position paper which I just mentioned. Our position, one of their positions is to use soft hold leg traps in a quantity that can make a meaningful reduction in the coy, within coy, in the coy population and not waste taxpayer dollars on box traps, which are not effective at all for coyotes. They work for raccoons, we've got some raccoons in there to kind of clear them out of the way, but they don't work for coyotes, no matter who you talk to, with trappers, professionals, they just don't use them. So we recommend that the trappers also meet with people who are in the environment. For instance, the groundskeepers, the two Wild Dunes golf courses, they know where the coyotes run all the time, they see them all the time. So, and, and also the police. I know that at night, the police see a lot of coyotes, from what I'm told, and make sure that we get the best knowledge we can to put traps in the best location, because these coyotes are hard to catch, they're really wily. And I think it was a movie about them. So our, our second position is that coexisting is not a strategy. When the aggressiveness scale, there's aggressiveness scale is used throughout the country of one to seven. One being they're pretty mild and docile, and number seven is they're very aggressive and attack, start to attack people. So we think we're at about a five out of seven, maybe a little more, a little bit more than that. And coexistence doesn't work when it gets that high. It's a failed policy which has allowed the population and the aggressiveness to climb dramatically in the last two years. And this, this word coexist is a nice idea, feels good, but by definition, the word co means two parties agree. And you know who didn't get the memo, right? But if this serious issue is left unchecked, we believe the collective we could be complicit should a child or an elderly person be attacked, or any person for that matter. Even if not complicit, it would be gut wrenching to know that we could, that we could have done something to try and prevent it and we didn't. At what point does this issue negatively affect our property values, the IOP brand, which we just talked about with good comments, right? And, and reduce tax revenues? For instance, we're told the city does not want to use real traps because of potential liability should someone's unleashed dog get caught in a trap. Well, what's the liability if a child is attacked? Thank you very much, and Judy? Save a few more.
Hello, everyone. My name's Judy Gogle, and I live at 8 Summer Dunes Lane in Wild Dunes. And I just wanted to reiterate a few things, and what really made me want to come up here today is something that happened maybe an hour before I came up here, and I ran into a lady named Arlene Oldham, who four years ago lost her small dog when it went out to relieve itself in, early in the morning before their daughter went to school. And this was four years ago. So this problem has started, you know, four years ago. And when we talk about the seven stages of, of things getting worse with the coyotes and their behavior becoming more aggressive, this has come, you know, this has grown worse and worse over the past four years, or even more than that than I'm aware of. But just in, from, you guys know Justin Miklas, I think, because he, he ran for council as well, and he put together some software, and people are reporting their coyote sightings to him through the software. And from November, where there were eight sightings, to December, there were 24 sightings. And these sightings are during the day, and more and more people are afraid to go out and walk their dogs, or they won't let their cats out that were used to being indoor/outdoor cats, but whatever the situation is to, you know, I personally had a situation where I had a friend visiting, and my husband went to take the dog out before going to bed at 11 o'clock at night, and the dog just stopped. It just had, it sensed the fear and it would not go out there. So my husband put the dog back inside, who knows where the dog went, the bathroom, but that's besides the point. And then he proceeded to walk up the street, Summer Dunes Lane, and kind of followed the coy, this coyote onto the golf course. And when he did that, he, you know, was banging and doing all the hazing procedures. One coyote was directly in front of him, in front of where all the brush was, and then there were three other coyotes that started to kind of spread out. And he got a little weirded out by that, and he just started backing off, back onto the path, and then the sprinklers went on. But he felt like he was, he was, he was scared, he was scared by that. And I'm sure you guys have heard the situation with a resident in Isle Palm Shannon Nuwabi that in, on October 18th, and she lives on 23rd Avenue, her 45-pound dog Stella was barking in the yard, and a large coyote chased Stella, and it ended up biting Stella. And she was screaming and slamming the chairs on the deck and on the porch, but, you know, the dog got, she got the dog away, but the coyote did not retreat. Okay? And then, what, three months later, November, December, two months later, Shannon had a similar situation where there were five coyotes that came into her backyard looking for her dog. And Stella, once again, was their target. Fortunately, and she posted this on Nextdoor, fortunately, I'd gone out with her and spotted them. I yelled at them and I tried to get them to leave, but they took no notice. As soon as Stella turned to come back to me, four coyotes went after her. My young children came outside with pots and pans to help scare them off. The coyotes reluctantly started to leave one by one after they caused a rutkus. Stella, the 45-pound dog, and these coyotes, you know, these coyotes were much larger than her dog. She's afraid for her kids to go out at night, we're all afraid to walk around. So I'm so happy that we're going to have this forum, both forums, but my concern is right now, we're in mating season. Coyotes are more aggressive, they're, they're looking for their territory. Right after that, 60 days later, we're going to have a bunch of pups around, and we need to be, our traps need to be out there, like Wild Dunes has right now, between December and February. So we can't wait until after we have this forum to have the traps out there. Am I allowed to ask you guys a question? Am I allowed to ask you guys a question?
Typically, on the public hearing, that's what we're doing, is hearing, not engaging back and forth. But you can pose a general question that we might not react to.
Okay. My question is, well, and the other thing was, and we have found that box traps attract cute little raccoons, which are coyote food. And we need them to be out there so they don't eat our pets. But my question is, are we willing to do something while it's the prime trapping season right now with soft-leg traps? That's my question. And I plead to please do something, because it takes a long time. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Adrian, oh, sorry, short, short girl. Hi, I'm Adrian Whaley. I live at 4 Whispering Palms. I sent council an email, but I'm just going to read my email. I think that'd be the best. I would like council to look at the construction worktimes. After living next door to construction now for 14 months and still going, the construction worktime of 7 to 7, 7 days a week, needs to be adjusted. Our own island garbage trucks don't run until 8:00 a.m. Delivery trucks arrive before 7 with supplies or dumpster relocation. When confronted, they state, "We don't take things off the truck till 7:00." This has been an ongoing issue with Southern Lumber, who we called personally, but nothing has changed. The 7 to 7 hours need to change, in my opinion, to 8 to 6. This summer, I did not sit by my pool one time because of gawking workers, saws, hammers, drills, you name it. I also have a seven-year-old son, who I did not let play outside because I do not, or alone out in the yard without, because I do not have background checks on the workers. I think it would, I don't think that I should be firing up the grill for dinner and still have an hour worth of workers who always stay later than 7:00. So an 8 to 6 construction workday would be much more conducive to island life. If council would consider Sunday as a no-construction day, that would be great as well. It would be nice to have a one-day break. I also think there needs to be some teeth in the ordinance. A large fine, no work the next day. But I think it needs to go to the builder, not to the subcontractors, because they are the ones who really need to police the subs and vendors. I think those who would oppose this would have not have lived beside a construction site. The island would greatly improve if we went to an 8 to 6, only six days of work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Curtis Kendall. I live at 2142nd Avenue. And I was going to wait to the Public Service Committee. As I talked to Luna last night, I talked to Gary and Jimmy both. Thank you very much. Jimmy, once again, I'd like to publicly thank you for the cart. The cart track over there by Palm Boulevard, we use that every day. It's awesome. Thank you very much for that. I have had a, after we went through the weather, the storms and all that, the weather finally got nice. We could turn off the air conditioning, open the doors and windows. The construction work on the rental behind us started. They actually had scaffolding cleaner around the building and only worked on Saturdays and Sundays. Monday through Friday, totally empty. Nothing going on, which tells me that they know that our ordinances are lenient and we're not, they're allowed to work on Saturdays and Sundays. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Didn't really expect to do this. The fellow, I was taking pictures across the street, from across the street, to note that there was like four or five trucks in their trailers during the week, nothing. Saturday and Sunday, eight or seven, like the lady said, 7 to 7, all day. The gentleman had stopped and said, "Mr. Kendall, can I do something for you?" And I said, "No." I said, "I'm just taking some photos." He said, "Well, we're allowed to work on Sundays." So they're very aware that they can work on Saturdays and Sundays, no questions asked, throw it in your face. And the fact that they can work, not work, Monday through Friday, and then come on the weekends, I can't even sit on my back porch, read the paper on Sunday morning. It's ridiculous. So I know that they're abusing the system. So I would please ask council to do something about this and remedy this as soon as possible. This has lasted for, well, basically since the weather turned nice, they went for about four months, maybe two months, three months, excuse me, and then they started back up. And they're still only working on Saturday and Sunday. It also brings up the point that by working Saturdays and Sundays, they're not, there's nobody to investigate, to kind of, and to find out that this particular home does not even have permit to build a deck on the roof. So this is also bringing about how they skirt the law. So once again, please, please do something about this Sunday workday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendall, what was, what was your address again?
2142nd.
Anyone else? Just, number one, thank you all for coming up and giving us your comments. And I want you to know that on February 1st, we are going to have a public forum, starting at 5:30 at the Recreation Center. And this is, again, for you are our bosses. Believe me, we hear you. But we want to have this public forum, and we're going to be listening to what you have to say. Also, on February 22nd, we're going to have a coyote forum.
Expo.
Expo.
Coyotes aren't invited.
We're not going to co? It's not co. We're going to have a coyote expo. And please give us the information that you have. And again, please come to that. It's important. Thank you all for coming and speaking.
Let me add just a couple of quick things. I think Chairperson Smith has consented to putting the discussion of amendments to the noise ordinance on the public safety agenda for consideration. So based on some of these complaints that we saw coming in, so that will be something that will be being talked about in the next Public Safety Committee meeting, which I believe is February 5th at 4 o'clock. So please do continue to participate on that. And then I also just want to take an opportunity, because it seemed clear to me from some of the comments, that not everybody is plugged into the city's Facebook page, the city's Twitter account, or Instagram. We are sending out a good bit of messaging about issues related to coyotes, meetings coming up, the public forum, things of that nature. So like and share and retweet, so if you will, we will get some press releases out as well. And I know that we have sent something concerning the public forum to Wild Dunes Community Association, so.
We're going to be addressing, I'll talk to you later, the noise ordinance in real property also.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Again, like our pages, go to the city website, follow it, and on Facebook.
Jimmy, if I may.
I, just, just to the same thing. I've had several citizens comment to me that they're completely unaware of what these meetings are. So I would just ask as well, we need to think about the fact that everybody's not online, everybody's not on Facebook. And, you know, interestingly, when I come across a connector sometimes and read special meeting, next thing I do is either look it up or have to call Marie or somebody to find out what it is. We really need to seriously address how we better inform what meeting topics are, and not just the fact that we're having a meeting.
Okay, moving on. Thank you all. Reports from standing committees. First up is Ways and Means. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ways and Means Committee met at 5:00 Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. All council members, all in attendance. In accordance with President Dr. Business, Mayor Carroll called the meeting in order. He acknowledged the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with Freedom of Information Act. Election of Chair and Vice Chair. Councilmember Bell was elected to serve as Vice Chair. No citizens' comments. We approved the meeting minutes of the November 28th meeting. Went to financial statements and briefly. At the end of December, the city was halfway through its fiscal year, making its target for the general fund revenue expenditures 50%. Revenue is worth 28% of budget and 79% of where the city was last year. Business licenses are due at the end of April and are currently at 16% of budget. On the other hand, rental licenses have been renewed and now at 90% of budget. Expenditures overall were 43% of budget. Cash on hand is a total of approximately $25 million in the bank. However, $10 million of that total is for the current beach re-nourishment project. We went through the tourism schedules. The municipal accommodations fees collected were excess of $64,000. Compared at $57,000 for the same month last year, ran 3% ahead of schedule. The city has received one check from Charleston County Accommodation Tax passed through for the year, but the treasurer has been told to expect another check this year. Hospitality taxes collected were slightly higher than fiscal year '17. In the year-to-date, collections are running 7% ahead of fiscal year '17. Project worksheets. We went through the Public Works Watchdown Project. And new business, Administrator Tucker stated the procurement code. State councils required to award contracts of a certain amount if a contract is included in the budget under a certain dollar amount. Staff only has to report on it. That being said, we went and approved five items. And the first one was consideration of a contract award of Love Chevrolet in the amount of $25,370, state contract pricing for a 2018 Chevrolet Silverado Extended Cap 4x4 to replace the animal control truck. Page 22 and line 32, Capital Projects Fund, Police Department capital outlay. Now, do you make, you call for a question, or do I?
You want to make a motion and get a second.
I don't want to make a motion as the chair. I want to open it up.
Yeah, then you ask someone.
We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions? Any discussion? There being none, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion B, or approval of up to $5,000 for replacement of checkmate inline flapper valves on 20th Avenue to the outfall. Page 23, line 51, Capital Projects Fund, drainage contingency, $35,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Consideration of contract award to Jones and Frank in the amount of $809,591.66 for removal and replacement of the underground storage tanks at the Isle of Palms Marina in the public worksite, the canopy of the public worksite, and the dock fuel dispensers at the marina. And there are several light items there. If you look at the minutes, you'll see page numbers and line numbers in parentheses and lighter print. I'm not going to bore you with those numbers anymore, but that's where it's already been approved in the budget, just so the public will know.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? So that motion passes. We go to consideration of sole-source contract awards of petroleum equipment service in the amount not to exceed $20,000 for the replacement of the monitoring systems for a generator at the public safety building. Is there a motion approved?
Second.
If anybody else wants to... Okay. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So we had a beach restoration, but that was handled in the special meeting earlier in the, in the evening. And the last thing that I have is consideration of 2019 Transportation Sales Tax, TST, request.
We forgot Martin.
Martin, I only have that here. Sorry. We also, did we vote on this?
This, I think, had to skip Ways and Means, because.
That's right. Okay, we have a recommendation that has not gone through Ways and Means. For the reward of a contract to Martin and Sons Contracting, incorporate an amount of $250,000 for the Isle of Palms Marina Bulkhead rehabilitation. Page 48, line 175, Marina Fund Capital Purchases, 1/3, Marina Fund, 2/3, State A-Tax, $356,500. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
How many bidders were there? There's three bidders for this? I believe this was what, the, is it lowest or second lowest?
No, it's the lowest bid. So it was Martin and Sons at $250,000, Blue Tide Marine Construction at $284,000, and E and D Contracting Services for $810,000.
Any further questions? Yes, sir.
I just, just a comment. I mean, we had a lot of conversations around the marina a little while ago. And I just wanted to point out, these were budgeted items. And, you know, we all tried to make very clear to the public that we were moving forward with taking care of the marina. And it is pleasing to see that we're sitting up here and doing exactly what we said we would do, spending money on the fuel tank replacement, spending money. As I understand it, this is the first third of the bulkhead capital expenditure cost. And we'll be looking at this in subsequent years as well, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Okay, sorry, now we got to go back to the Transportation Sales Tax. This came out, what?
I think it was in Public Safety, the Transportation Sales Tax. We may have discussed it.
But it, yeah, you know, they can take care of it if they want to. But if we, we even had a motion and we passed it. But it doesn't matter to me where it comes up. If the public said you want to stand.
It's on the agenda under Public Safety.
Okay, we'll just give it. And let's see. Okay, we had consideration of a proposal for the Palms Hotel for use at the municipal parking lot for parking for their guests and employees. Is there any further action on this?
So just about 10 minutes, I think, before the council meeting started, you all were sent an email by the Palms Hotel. I feel sure that because we've been doing the, the action after the executive session and then the public hearing and now the council meeting, I would find it doubtful that all of councils had time to study that, to be prepared to take any action on it. But that's, that's the only information we have received, is what you received by email just right before the meeting. And, and so I have not had time to read and study it as well to make a recommendation or suggestion to council about.
Plus, yeah, we really, we need a minimum 24 hours.
Mr. Chair. Just so you know, the city did reach out many times, starting late last week through this weekend, trying to get that, including yesterday.
In a timely fashion.
In a timely fashion, so.
Well, we'll hold off on any further discussion on that matter. See anything else? I don't think there's anything else. Next meeting will be 5:00 Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. And I want to remind everybody again, the citizens' forum scheduled for Thursday, February 1st, at direction of 5:30, 7 o'clock. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public Safety.
Okay, we covered a lot of ground, but I'll start out with, we held our meeting at 2:00 p.m. Tuesday, January 9th. All members were present. We voted, was elected Chair of the committee, and Councilmember Bell was elected Vice Chair. I'm going to start with the informational items first. Chief Buchanan updated us on efforts to remove encroachments from rights-of-way. The department identified 63 encroachments that needed to be removed. 13 remain, and one or two are left working with the department to get in compliance. Well, there's actually a few more remaining that the city prosecutor will be preparing a letter with a citation of non-compliance. Status of overgrown lots, 28 were identified in 2017. The city is working with eight to get them cleared. One has asked for more time. The city prosecutor was working on a letter with a citation for those who remain in non-compliance. We voted to recommend funding for the new animal track and replacement of the monitoring system on the public safety building generator, which we've already covered with Ways and Means and the full council earlier. We touched on and plan for further discussion of crosswalks as a way to promote safe crossings and slow down speeding on waterway. We discussed expected microsurfing, microsurfacing of Palm Boulevard between 21st and 41st avenues by South Carolina Department of Transportation, which they have funded that, but not scheduled the microsurfacing. It will likely happen in the spring, and we asked city staff to ask transportation, or DOT officials, that they avoid doing it during our spring break, which was an issue that came up last year with some work that was being done and caused some headaches. We asked, da-da-da-da-da. Microsurfing, microsurfacing is not the same as resurfacing. Microsurfing, microsurfacing is not the same as resurfacing. In microsurfacing, a thin layer of asphalt is placed over the existing asphalt to preserve the asphalt for a longer period of time. Chief Graham reported that for the first time, the state was, the state's city firefighters' 1% fund was audited, but everything was found to be in order. In accordance with law, 1% of island residences, island residents' fire insurance goes to this fund, and firefighters get to decide how it is spent locally. Following strict rules, firefighters on the Isle of Palms typically spend the majority of their 1% fund for additional retirement and insurance. Let's see, okay, as far as reports from the fire departments, and we covered November and December, and also got some year-round figures, but the highlights, calls of interest in December included untangling a dolphin from a crab potline and extinguishing a fire on the sixth hole of the harbor course. For 2017, if I got these figures right, fire personnel responded to 1,125 alarms and saw a total of 488 patients. 12 fire inspections were done, that identified 43 violations. The police department's report from Chief Buchanan, police recovered a stolen golf cart in November, and in November and December, there had been a rash of car break-ins between 23rd to 30th Avenue and between the 100 and 800 blocks of Ocean Boulevard. For the year of 2017, more than 49,000 calls from consolidated dispatch were filled in by Isle of Palms Police Department, and the department made 344 arrests. Just for comparison, Sullivan's Island Police Department received about 9,295 calls for service. If I, if I'm reading that chart correctly, I hope I am, which would be 1/5 the amount covered by Isle of Palms Police, which I think is worth noting. The chief was pleased to see that the number of burglaries in 2017 was approximately half the number in 2016, and he commented that it would take citizen participation, cooperation to reduce the number of vehicle break-ins. That's a reminder for everybody to lock your doors, lock your vehicles, and not leave them out outside unlocked, and also, I believe, it would help not to leave valuables in open view on your seat. We had a discussion about the decline in the number of tickets, speeding tickets issued, well, I guess, mostly speeding tickets issued from 2016 to 2017, and we will continue that discussion at our February committee meeting. Reported coyote sightings from the police department, I believe, totaled 24 in November and 33 in December, which would be a significant jump, and as we discussed, likely because we've been trying to encourage people to report sightings. One coyote was trapped on the island in 2017 and euthanized. The chief commented that the reporting of sightings helps the department in placing traps, so we continue to encourage the public, when you do see a coyote, to report that to the non-emergency number of the police department. And we went on to discuss what is on the horizon in regards to the coyote issue. Councilmember Bell and I expressed our hopes that in addition to coyote control measures, we would try to get a good count of coyotes, and I also asked that we try to bring in an expert who would provide good information, not only about numbers, but about hotspots and habitats, so we can have a better understanding of what we are up against. And currently, I believe, city staff are, at that particular moment, city staff were preparing to meet with South Carolina Department of Natural Resources and staff from Sullivan's Island and Dewey's about coyotes. Since then, staff are currently looking at several measures that we might use to step up and be, with more aggressive control of the coyote population. And we do have plans for the public coyote expo on February 22nd at 5:30 PM at the rec center, which will give residents opportunities to learn more about coyotes, trapping options, and leave written comments and concerns. As far as things that we need to take action on or discuss further, we discussed the parking, amending the parking ordinance to enforce no overnight parking for locations adjacent to city-owned properties. And this consideration was spurred by complaints in 2017 related to the parking on 27th Avenue that runs along the rec center ball fields. And at that point, the complaints were not just about vehicles, but also, possibly more so, about equipments and boats being parked indefinitely and overnight in that location. To restrict parking overnight in that location would require signage, and so, while complaints had come from neighbors, the chief told us that the vehicles parked overnight at the rec center last year were mostly island residents, and the majority belonged to residents of 27th Avenue. So we discussed, instead of prohibiting all overnight parking, our committee unanimously voted to eliminate non-vehicular parking at the rec center, which seemed to be the primary concern. So I would like to make a motion, asking our attorney to draft a similar amendment to our current ordinances, to make those restrictions, but consider whether the word "non-vehicular" fits the spirit of what we are trying to do in terms of limiting what was essentially equipment and boats. And also, that I believe it would probably, although we didn't discuss this in the committee and looking at it more closely and some discussion with our city administrator, that we would want to provide exceptions for equipment belonging to the city and city employees.
Second.
Is this just overnight or all day? No, no non-vehicular parking?
Just overnight.
Just overnight.
Well, that's what I think we were just, we were specifically talking about things that were being left overnight. So I don't know if there's...
I think Sterling brings up a valid point, is as we look at this, do we feel it's appropriate? You know, as we had last year, backhoes, boats, other things out there would both interfere with residents' quality of life, plus interfere with the use of the recreation center for recreation purposes. So it's, you know, it's a little bit incomprehensible to me that somebody would want to store construction equipment there during the day. So I, you know, my idea would be to defer it to the way that we write this ordinance, and then give it consideration with the council, you know, how restrictive we want to make this.
Did you say you want to make an exception for the city?
I guess, so that you would allow the city, if they needed to park equipment overnight for whatever reason.
Let me clarify that. I think as this was discussed in the committee meeting, you know, it kind of morphed from the rec center to any city properties. The rec center was where the complaint started and where the discussion was held, but it also went into, you know, any city properties. And there are occasions, well, obviously, you know, one would be our public worksite, but this lot next door, there are occasions over here where we have to park city equipment over there. Same thing in this lot. Sometimes, you know, sometimes city employees' vehicles are parked overnight for when they are traveling and carpooling. They might leave a personal vehicle. So, you know, I just worry that we want to make sure in the crafting of an ordinance that we don't find ourselves in a situation like we did with some of our garbage roll carts, where the city is in violation of its own ordinances.
Right, right. City's in violation of its own ordinances.
Just, just, just the point that this, in no way, though, to the point of carpooling, this has no impact whatsoever on personal cars and vehicles. So in that particular situation, it would not apply anyway.
Right.
That's true. So I guess the question is, do we just want to do this for the rec center? If we were just doing this for that, the rec center, I would imagine there would be, still be some cases where you might need to park some equipment at the rec center overnight that would be city equipment, that you wouldn't want to be...
Like what?
Any of the...
Well, I'll just make a couple of comments if there, if, you know, we have a contractor that's maybe working on the tennis courts or something right there. They might have equipment that they might have to leave there overnight, but, I mean, those would be sporadic uses, but all I'm saying is that these need to be things that we think about as the assignment is given for the crafting of the ordinance, that we want to make sure that we think about those things.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're not spot-zoned.
Well, and that's the reason why I said all city properties.
And it's not just, the thing is, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
This, this regulation's obvious, it's, has to do with me, so I'll speak on it. I have triplet boys, each, I mean, they have boats, and sometimes they park them across the street, and I guess my neighbors don't like it. But what I don't like about this, and that's fine, we already have ordinances in place, and that's a problem with sometimes the city gets in this situation where, you know, it's, they want to go through and create another ordinance to, you know, specifically outline for something. You know, we have ordinance for obstructions, you know, be unlawful for any person to obstruct, cause or to be obstructed, or permit the obstruction by any means, in a manner to extend any public walkway, footway, bicycle path, public street, highway, public square, alley, or other public place, or grounds within the city for any purpose of this concern. I mean, we have ordinances in place that regulate this. The problem is, is the enforcement of certain ordinances. I think the public safety needs to look at that as well. We need to go back and look at that. Don't spot-zone certain areas, because what part is this? This is from, does this take place from Hartnett to Waterway, just in those numbered streets, in those numbered spots? Because up the street from there, there's been a boat that's been parked at the corner of Waterway, or quarter of Palm Boulevard and 27th for the last six months, okay? And a car has been parked there. So it's not, you're just, you're just taking care of one little spot on the island for a block, when it could be a problem island-wide. You can't go through and start spot-zoning these things. Then you create ordinances and regulations that compile on top of each other that you have no control over. And now we have an ordinance for 27th Avenue, or we're going to create another ordinance for 32nd Avenue, or we're going to create another ordinance for, and we have to look at this thing island-wide. I understand that 27th Avenue is a city road, okay? It's not part of the DOT system, is what I believe, because we, so we can regulate it just the way we do regulate Ocean Boulevard. And that's fine, but we still have to manage it the same way as SE DOT regulations, okay? So, I mean, I understand, I mean, there's, there are public, there are obstructions, but there are obstructions in the right of way right now that, right now, the city is throwing their hands up and have done nothing about. So either tackle the problem island-wide and don't spot-zone it, so.
If I may, there was no discussion in public safety about spot-zoning this at 27th, right? So frankly, to my surprise, in the way we're discussing having an ordinance, there was no intention, no discussion, that it was spot-zoned for 27th. Part of that discussion was what we allow to happen at the marina property. And I was the one that brought up, you know, I don't find it appropriate to have non-marina purposes trailers and other things stored there. We got into a large discussion around what constitutes a recreational vehicle, right?
And that's in real, in real property.
Right. So, so I mean, there was never an intention to say 27th Avenue's spot-zone, and I completely agree with you, right? If we start doing that, we'll have street-by-street ordinances which make no sense and don't solve a problem, they create additional problems. I think what we're addressing there is the fact that 27th last year, and it was not aimed at the residents as much. That become a general-purpose parking lot for marina overflow, employees, construction vehicles, boats, and other purposes, which also interfere with the purpose of the rec center, which is to serve the city's recreational needs, right? So I think we do need to be careful in the crafting of this and make sure that it's in the spirit it was intended, and not in a way that, you know, interferes and becomes a spot-zone issue. Thank you.
Given the exchange that everyone just had, I'd recommend that you withdraw the motion and bring it back to committee for further review.
A second.
A second.
Well, I withdraw my motion.
So, the motion and the second is being withdrawn?
And going back to public safety.
Okay. Moving on to, I guess the only other thing left is that the discussion of the transportation sales tax funds, which Charleston County asked for requests from municipalities to put in, and we considered requests for the 2019 transportation sales tax funds, and ultimately voted in favor of two requests. Intersection improvements to 14th Avenue and Palm Boulevard that would help bicyclists coming off the connector by providing space for them to safely turn right with, along with vehicular traffic, and regulation bike paths on both sides of Waterway Boulevard and Palm Boulevard as part of a loop that would go from 21st to 57th Avenues, serving two groups, both serious cyclists who are more inclined to use Palm Boulevard, but also slow down vehicular traffic, and residents who tend to use Waterway more for families and kids. If approved, and if there's enough space on Waterway to make this happen, we would likely resort to using the multipurpose path on Waterway, which is more difficult to maintain because of tree roots and overhanging branches, that would become something more of a pedestrian sidewalk. So I would like to make a motion that we move forward with drafting requests for the Transportation Sales Tax Committee for those two priority requests.
Becca.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Chairperson.
Excuse me. Chairperson Smith. Just to clarify, I asked a question during Ways and Means about this, and I just want to clarify, from my own understanding and also for the benefit of the public here, what I understand with, with these priorities is that it's been recommended to us that we go after these types of projects because we're more likely to receive funding at a higher quantity than we would if we had put something, say, along the lines of drainage.
Yes, that was my understanding from our discussion is, and maybe Desiree could speak to that further, but that the committee likes bicycle improvements and is looking for good projects that would allow greater transportation by bicycle.
Because we could, we could put forth a recommendation to fund other projects, and drainage is one of those projects we could put forth to fund.
Right.
We've said not to because we think it's more likely that the city, or the county will grant us funds if we go with the bike.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
I would just add, and thank you, you and the committee for making the recommendation. I would add that you, if you haven't already, in the future, look island-wide and where we can connect paths and cycling lanes, and I think you'll find that with relatively little effort, we can strategically make some connections, that over time, the whole island could be interconnected with a path, be it pedestrian or cycling. But there's a great opportunity there, I think, with, with other funds that are available and having a big impact on quality of life for our citizens.
It's me? Do I?
Janie.
Yes.
I made the motion.
A second.
Call for the vote?
I call for it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All in favor say?
No, that's Janie.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay.
I guess there's no names.
And the next meeting?
Oh. I believe public safety is February the 5th at 4 o'clock.
Sorry about that.
That's quite right. Public Works, and without the chair, we're going to have Linda give the report.
So, with the mayor's indulgence and the will of the group, there were, and for the public's information, the next four committee meetings either didn't have a full group there, though they had a quorum, or sitting in the membership on those committees are people who are assuming temporary positions until the election occurs and we have a full nine-member council. So in that case, there was not an election of a chair and vice chair, so I chaired the meetings, obviously, I do not vote in those situations, and that's the reason why I would be reporting. But there are actually four that fall into that category, Public Works, Recreation, Personnel, and Real Property. So if you would like for me to just go from one to the next...
Just go right through.
Rather than you having to, having to call on me four times, then...
Just highlights, yes.
So the first of those were Public Works. Public Works met at 11:00 AM. Public Works met at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 11th, and all the members of the committee were in attendance except one who was out of town. We heard from Director Pitts, he gave his departmental reports. There was nothing in the report that was, other than routine, that he discussed. There are some expenses, some large expenses related to some vehicle maintenance, but other than that, there was nothing on the reports. The item related to Shep Enterprises, which is the contractor that helps us to keep our beach clean, the sale of that company is not going to go through, so Mr. Shep announced that we would be working with him for the next year. So the next item that was discussed was civil site, environmental, and 32nd Avenue drainage. The committee and council has been working on a problem associated with the erosion of the ditch that serves that area and some impacts on private property. And David Stevens reported that he had initially, who's the engineer that's working on the project, he reported that initially the Corps of Engineers was going to rule that ditch as their jurisdictional area, which would mean that we would have to file for a Corps permit in order to do any of the work, and that would take a long time. This was very, very frustrating for the two citizens whose property is impacted by this erosion, Mr. Burke and Alex Opelous, who were both in attendance at the meeting. Subsequent to this meeting, we have received a different opinion from the Corps of Engineers, which is good news, and I'm hoping that they hold to it, that they will not consider it jurisdictional wetlands. So we may be released from what we felt like was going to be something that would impede our forward progress in working with the citizens that are above that eroding ditch. So there will be more work on that going forward. We talked about that the NPDES Vehicle Washdown Project at the Public Works is complete. We talked about that we were continuing to make progress on the Phase II drainage work that is ongoing right now in the eastern end of the island. And then some of the things that we discussed, like the underground storage tank, those replacements, those have already been discussed and treated in Ways and Means, so I will not go into that. There was some discussion to bring the committee up to date on things that will be being discussed, I believe, by the group during visioning and during the budget meetings, related to the fact that the demands on the Public Works team have increased, and they have been able to continue to keep up with garbage and debris, but the many other activities that Public Works handles, the demand has become greater, and we really need to consider some staffing possibilities for that department. So it'll be more discussion of that as we go forward with visioning and work on the budget. The committee talked about the actual name of the committee, and the suggestion was made that something like the Environment and Public Works Committee be, you know, be considered. We discussed the fact that changes to committees and the nomenclature describing them and their duties would require an ordinance change on the part of this group, so that was discussed in committee, no particular action was taken. Also discussed was the 20th Avenue drainage problem, and that was dealt with in the Ways and Means Committee in the award of some funds to help with that problem there. The next meeting of Public Works will be Thursday, February the 1st, at 9:00 a.m. in the upstairs conference room at City Hall. And if there are any questions from members that are not on that committee, or if there's anything that those who were in attendance at the meeting want to add, I'd be glad to hear those. Okay, want me to keep going?
Great job.
I got one question.
Sure.
In the minutes, you talked about the status of the city compactor, and I'm assuming that's the one over here. I think, and I'm not sure what the lifespan is of that, and we're having constant issues with it, and just maintenance, and it's not locked up now, it's, or the way it's being utilized, what have you. I think we need to address that, I think we can do that in council, I mean, in our committee and just make sure we keep that on the agenda, so whether we... I think we need to address, looking at perhaps relocating that to an area that's more feasible for, you know, all the folks that use it, and away from, you know, some of the business aspect of it, because it does, it's getting that time of the season, we're just going to start smelling up some of the restaurants in the area. So if we can move it farther away into some of the other parking lots, or in that same parking lot, but further away from some of those businesses, that'd be great, too.
So I'm confident the committee will be talking about that more. Okay, going, moving on to the Recreation Committee. A Recreation Committee met 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, January the 10th, in the upstairs small conference room at City Hall. Director Page gave her report, which was basically covered about a quarter's worth of, a calendar quarters' worth of work. They have been extremely busy at the rec center, as they always are. Director Page also spent a little time going into some in-depth descriptions of some of the activities at the rec center for the benefit of the new members of council, so there was a little bit of that that was discussed. There's a whole long list of classes that were, that occurred at the rec center during those months. I think probably for purposes of this meeting, the exciting thing to report are the upcoming activities, and that is Doggy Day at the Rec, which will occur on Saturday, February the 10th. We'll have Dr. Jose on hand giving vaccinations and microchipping the island's dog, and the officers from the Alapambs Police Department will be there selling the annual dog licenses. So the Doggy Day at the Rec's always a hugely popular event. If you've never gone, certainly recommend that you do. The other thing coming up is Front Beach Fest, and that is scheduled to be March 31st, Saturday, March 3rd... No, sorry. I jumped ahead to the Easter egg hunt, keep me straight, March 3rd. And then the annual Easter egg hunt is March 31st, and the yard sale is April 14th. So these are things that are coming up, so watch the city's website, the city calendar, the signs, city Facebook page, Twitter, and Instagram, and we'll be making sure that we remind you of those things. The next meeting of the Recreation Committee will be at 8:30 a.m. Monday, February the 5th, again in the small conference room. Next committee is the Personnel Committee. I'd like first to report on vacancies that exist within the city, which are minimal. We have one part-time animal control officer vacancy, and we're starting recruitment for beach services officers. So, you know, spread the word that we need beach services officers, we'll start hiring. These are good jobs that sometimes morph into other positions with the city, so if you know people who might be interested in working for us this summer, then encourage them to apply for a beach services officer position. Other thing I want to announce before I get into the meat of the committee is the Safety Sweepstakes winners for both November and December. And these, the reason this is important is that this means that these people had no accidents and were eligible to be picked among the Safety Sweepstakes, and safety is a very, very important thing for the city. And the Sweepstakes winners are William Seabrook in the Building Department, Brian Bosman for the Fire Department, Sharon Baldrick for Police, Russell Rugper for Public Works. Those were November. December was Rhonda Gibbons in the Building Department, Lynn Golden in the Fire Department, Anna Mitchell in the Police Department, and Willie Powell in Public Works. So then, talking about the things that occurred among the committee members, we first had an overview of activities, of the kinds of things, and the timeline of the things that the Personnel Committee would undertake throughout the year, just to kind of familiarize the new members with the kinds of things that might come before the Personnel Committee and the calendar for those things. There was also an update given on the status of the city's personnel handbook, which is something that the committee will review and make a recommendation to City Council for approval. That is a process that's underway now. The handbook has completed its legal review, but it is now at staff-level review for changes, and Lynette DeGroot is continuing to work on that with members of the city staff. The other thing that was discussed was the city's education reimbursement policy. That policy has been in place for about 20 years, and maybe even a little bit longer than that, and we thought it might be a good idea to kind of review other education reimbursement policies that other local governments have, and maybe see if there's any need to refine the city's policy. Lynette DeGroot reported that we currently have 12 employees that are enrolled in this program, and that is a program whereby the city reimburses employees that are in good standing with the city, who commit to staying with the city for a period of time. We reimburse tuition and books expense for them to further their education, so long as it's related to their employ. We had a discussion, a continued discussion of the, continued discussion of the continuity plan, which is an initiative that was started last year as a personal goal for the city administrator. It was initiated last year. It needs continued work and refinement, and so there was discussion of setting that as the city administrator's personal goal for that additional work for this year. However, that discussion was delayed because some members of the committee felt that setting that personal goal for the city administrator's evaluation should be done after the visioning meeting and with some more measurable aspects of what the, what the end product would be. So that decision was delayed about the continuity plan. And then the, an action that was taken by the committee that it will be necessary for someone on council to make a, to make a motion and a second and adopt this was to move Veterans' Day to a city holiday to replace the floating holiday. And just to clarify, for the city of Alapambs, a floating holiday doesn't mean every single employee gets to choose a day, and it can be a different day. It means that the departments vote on it and a day is selected, and so the recommendation from the Personnel Committee is that that be eliminated altogether and Veterans' Day become a city holiday. No new holiday, just replace it.
I make a motion?
Second.
Should be noted that...
Do the department heads recommend that change?
So, they did not. It came forward as a suggestion from the city clerk, and that is because this voting and assembling of the voting comes through her. It's something that she assembles every year, and what was becoming very obvious in that process was that there really wasn't another day that would work, because as you all know, during our busy peak season, basically Memorial Day through Labor Day, we discourage time off, and there are two holidays that fall within that anyway. So it really became that the only two real viable choices were Veterans' Day and Good Friday. Good Friday is not a choice that works for the city because we have the Easter egg hunt on Saturday after Good Friday, and we can't have people off on Good Friday, so I know I'm going on the...
Let me try, maybe, I didn't simplify my question enough. Do they support the change of having a set holiday versus having the flexibility of choosing? And if we went with the motion on the floor, would your department heads oppose this if asked?
Yes.
So it's not replacing a floating holiday where employees pick that holiday, it's a floating holiday that everybody gets.
I understand.
This one, and, now I can't remember my other point, but it...
I think I might know the point you were going to make, which is that they voted it to be Veterans' Day for several years running.
Right.
So I would, to answer your question without having spoken to the department heads, I would say the evidence historically would support yes, that most people would say, let's, this is what we're going to vote on anyway.
If I remember correctly, like, a lot of coordinated services between the city and the county, the county is closed down that night. So they can't take anything to a dump, and, you know, so that's one of the reasons.
And people think the city's closed anyway, so in terms of service to citizens, you know, they assume we're not here anyway, so there would not be any degradation, degradation to service to citizens. I don't know whether there's any opposition to this, no one has voiced any to me, and I have a feeling most of the department heads know what's going on. A lot of them pay attention to what's happening in the Personnel Committee because it is going to affect them, and I am not aware, I've not been made aware of any rumblings within, from any of the department managers, that there's objections. Nobody's saying anything as I'm looking out there.
They look pretty stoic, guys.
Having heard all of that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Carrie's.
So the next committee, did I say when the next meeting is?
No.
Okay, sorry. The next meeting for Personnel is at 4:00 p.m. February 12th in the small upstairs conference room. The next committee is the Real Property Committee, and I will ask your indulgence because there was a lot of material covered in this meeting, you know, sort of post for this year, but I will try to get through it quickly. So the Real Property Committee met at 9:30 on Tuesday, January 9th. There were a couple of comments from Marina tenants that are worthy of noting and for the group and the community to be aware of. Jay Clark came forward renewing his desire for a, to renegotiate a longer-term lease. He also made the request of the, that the committee consider the city funding the replacement of the walk-in cooler. He further requested some assistance with some relief concerning the parking at the Marina site. So those three things were, I believe, the key things that he mentioned to be considered coming forward, which the committee will be addressing these things in their subsequent meetings. The other tenant of the Marina that spoke was Michael Fim with Title Wave Water Sports, and he was advocating for an Alapambs Adventures. His vision of that was to be, to have some sort of front beach location, either in the city lots or maybe housed along with one of the other businesses down there, and the whole purpose would be one central location for visitors to go to, to book other things, in particular at Marina. Some of his advocacy had to do with if, you know, there might be some opportunities for the relief of parking at the Marina site, if people could park at the front beach lots and then get things booked and perhaps run a future shuttle back and forth. In the, in the committee meeting, it was mentioned to him that outdoor sales of goods and services were still outside of the allowance in the zoning code, so he would have to either have a place of business or work something out with an existing business, or become a tenant on the city's parking lots. So that information was passed along. In old business, one of the biggest things that was discussed was the beach restoration project and the 281,000 cubic yards of sand that was lost during Hurricane Irma. In a special meeting of City Council, City Council has already acted to indicate that they wish the city staff to pursue replacement of that 281,000 cubic yards of sand, utilizing FEMA funds, if FEMA will do it, and then also made accommodation for, from where the local share would be sought. So that action has already occurred. We also gave a status concerning the beach access pass signs. As you all may recall from last year, those who were here and those who've read about it, that we're going to have some different signs on several of our beach access paths. It's 5th, 8th, 9th, 21st, 25th, 28th, 42nd, Sea cabins, and it's public restrooms. And these will be larger signs with a lot of the information on one sign, rather than there being multiple signs at each beach access path. So those signs are in production at this time. Hopefully, we'll have them up before the season. There was also some discussion of the need for the ability of the... There was also some discussion of the need for the ability of the Palms Hotel guests to park in the city lots, and I think that's already been previously covered in ways and means. And then we did have a discussion concerning RV parking at the Marina site, and that comes as a result of some, a parking of RVs that occurred basically during the holiday season when visitors to some of our island residents were visiting places where there either wasn't space enough to park the, the family that came in an RV or they were not allowed to park their RV there, so they were parked at the Marina. Brian Barrigan willingly stopped that practice when the city informed him he was receiving complaints, but the committee did receive some legal advice from the city attorney related to the leases and related to RV parking at the Marina. And there was a motion that came out of that discussion after executive, executive session that was a request for the city to address RV parking by getting a clear definition of what an RV is, so an RV definition, and then to look at it as an island-wide issue, not just a Marina issue, and basically make a decision on how the city wants to regulate RV parking at the Marina and elsewhere on the island. So if it is the will of council, then to do that and look at ordinance changes to do that, then there would need to be a motion from council for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
It's, if I may, Mr. Mayor. It says, address, for the city to address RV parking, the clear definition is an island-wide issue, and how the city wants to regulate RV parking at the Marina and elsewhere. Does that mean private property? Or does that mean city property?
Let, let, let me clarify. This was not directed at Ryan. And, and it's funny, because I read in, in Moultrie News, it sounded like we were trying to regulate whether people could park RVs at their homes and in their sites. That was never the intention of the discussion. The discussion was around city property and, and the use of that city property, and in particular, as I brought it up in committee, were specific in the lease at the Marina that says for Marina purposes. There were trailers left there. My definition was not an RV. They were airstream trailers disconnected from vehicles left there for two weeks. That started a conversation on what's an RV, and it was clear that there was not consensus in that committee as to what constituted an RV, right? So it was recommended by our attorney that we, that we define what we're talking about and where we're talking about it. And it was, Ryan, related to city property. It was not related at all to whether somebody could park something in their yard.
Yeah, in the, in the motion it says elsewhere, and it's, it's very vague.
It is vague, and it, and it needs to be precise. There, there was no recommendation that I recall, and I think Jimmy and Susan would say, this, this was not an attempt to tell people what they, they can do in their yard.
Absolutely. I'm just curious, and as the committee looks into this and the city's attorney, how you distinguish between an RV, in this case, I understand it was left there as opposed to a large boat, which there's the authority to do, or at a Marina, by its nature, you have transient people living, actually living on their boat. What's the difference if you have a thirty-foot RV and somebody's staying in it, where you've got all the same facilities, versus they're in a watercraft twenty yards away? So you might just consider that issue.
Hence the definition.
But I, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, there are transient boats there. What's the difference between staying in a boat versus on the land? Just consider that, because I, I find it interesting. That's the focus of the Marina, yet even when there wasn't somebody resident in the RV, but what if there was? It's a Marina, by its nature, it's transient, we service this kind of things, whether it's on wheels or floating. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I, you know, we had talked about using municipal lots off-season for storage for revenue. Not that I, I don't necessarily think that's the best thing to do, but we had discussed it, and so I don't want to sort of cut off our noses by our face if we did want to go down that road at some point, to use those municipal lots for a revenue stream for, you know, boat storage. We had said boat and RV storage, I, you know, again, that's something we had, had really talked about was for revenues, so I don't know that, you know, we have, we have to think about unintended consequences.
Okay, just for, for point of clarity, a little, a little bit more conversation here as usual. You know, Jay Clark was present from Morgan Creek at the same meeting, and the discussion was, we have to be aware that one purpose of the Marina might be beneficial to Brian Barriga's business operation. Detrimental to the operation of a restaurant. So, you know, when do you say it, it's okay and it's not okay, right? One vehicle, one trailer probably is not disruptive. Allowing a practice that grows amongst that and starts to interfere with other businesses or separate leases to the city do have an impact, right?
Well, I'm talking about the front beach lots.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm.
Well, this is city. It's all city.
I understood, totally, totally understood and do not disagree.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm just confining to the purpose of what we were intending, and I do, and categorically agree with you. I think we have an overall issue with city property to understand what we allow and what we don't allow, and, and we need broader discussion on it. And I think the motion and the purpose of it was to clarify, you know, what constitutes an RV, and to Councilman Kinghorn's point, I never even considered that a transient boat by purpose who's docking there and paying those fees as a transient boater on their way to Florida would fall under the purview of what we're discussing here. That was never the intention.
But, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I thought these city council chambers were filled up last year, time and time and time again, when we started talking about.
Well, I'm not talking about boondocking, I'm talking about storage.
Well, it, it, you know, I think we need to leave, leave that alone.
Okay, okay.
For a while, let it cool off a little bit.
Okay, I was just talking about for revenue.
It got people pretty hot, everybody I talked to.
For storage, not using it as a.
Well, I got a client's got a boat storage facility he'd love to sell you. I had a headache.
We have a motion and a second.
The motion, can we repeat the motion, and for clarification, we're just talking about a definition of RV, is that's it?
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay.
For the city attorney to review what the description is.
Okay.
City properties.
That's what the motion is, it has, but.
We're not voting on whether to do something or not do something, it's to provide definition so that we can have an intelligent conversation.
Okay.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay, ayes have it.
All right, that concludes my reporting. Next meeting for Real Property is on another page here. It's at four PM February eighth in the small conference room.
You did a great job on all of them, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Reports from boards and commissions. Accommodation's tax had no meeting in January. Board of Zoning Appeals, minutes are attached, I'm not going to bore anybody, everybody has them in their minutes. Under the planning, if everybody would kind of review those as for the drainage, that's something we're gonna be talking a lot about in the future. So again, go back into the planning commission and look at the drainage comments from Charleston County. Reports from special joint committees, none. Petitions received, none. Bills already in possession of council. Second reading of ordinance twenty-one, twenty seventeen oh seven, and ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter Four, Zoning, Article Eight. Flood damage prevention of the City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances to provide definition for the reference datum to be used for the base flood elevation shown on the flood insurance rate maps, and to provide for a minimum elevation for residential and non-residential construction. Do we want to go forward with this after all of the comments we had? And if so.
I think we need to, need to look at it further. Planning, planning needs to look at it.
So a motion deferred at?
Yep.
Seconded as well.
Any other discussions?
Before you, before you vote, let me just give a little clarity here. This actually came out of the planning commission, so it's coming to you as a recommendation from them. So I, I don't know, I mean, you can certainly send it back to planning, but without any sort of guidance concerning what change you want them to discuss, it's something they've really already discussed. What you might wish to do is defer second reading if you want to allow more time and more consideration.
That's what I thought we were going.
Thanks for the information. Yeah, that's what I would prefer. After the comments from the citizens, this is the first time we have comments from the citizens tonight.
You know, the counter argument to that is, we want, all these elements are designed in case there is a, a storm, or we continue to have water-based issues. I think we should be raising the bar for the community, not lowering it. We have a storm and we have problems, we're gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna hear complaints that, why didn't you make this change when you had the opportunity? It created X, Y, Z damage.
Well, I, I tend to side with the people that are living paycheck, paycheck of people that are on fixed incomes, retired people, and, and they could use reduction, I see their argument, reduction in insurance premiums right now. They're gonna get those anyways.
Right, that's not gonna change.
Yeah, but, but if anybody new coming along, you say you want to go a foot above, that's what I heard Douglas say, that's only if they're building, they're making an addition.
I was struggling trying to understand this as I went along as well, and I want to make sure that I do understand it. What we're doing with this is maintaining where we're at today, right? There, there really is not a change. The FEMA recommendations would change our current existing ordinance to allow structures to be built closer to the ground. This would only impact structures that chose to rebuild. I'm, I'm on a ground level lot, right? If I chose to rebuild, I would be abiding by this particular ordinance. I do think, and, and the reason that I seconded the motion, there is still citizen misunderstanding around this. What, what I heard from the audience was, you know, you guys pass this and I'm gonna get my insurance benefit. That's not true at all, right? FEMA, FEMA guidelines will manage the insurance rates. What we do has nothing to do with that, but I do think there's a bit of misconception from what I heard from the audience today. And, and that doesn't mean, you know, deferral that none of us are in support of doing this. I, I just personally feel some obligation to listen to the citizens, give a little bit of time here, come back to this issue, and if we're all in agreement, then we both move this forward.
Yes.
I have a question specific to the fourteen feet, that's above sea level.
Well, it's thirteen feet, and we require an additional one foot.
Above sea level. Above sea level, it's not above the surface.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, and I would be curious to know how other municipalities are reacting and if they're considering doing anything like what we're talking about.
I think if we go, go through Sullivan's or Isle of Palms, don't you see more houses being raised?
Yes.
Than anything else? I mean, this is a trend. For a point of reference, in our Public Works meeting a week or so ago, there was an engineering consulting firm that's dealing with the drainage issues. There were staff there, there are other individuals there, and I asked the question, do we have unanimity that we all agree that there's sea level rising? Not one person disagreed with that statement. So if we're in an environment on a barrier island where we have sea rises, rising, and we expect that to be in the future, and most communities are planning for it along the coast, why wouldn't we support these types of measures?
And, and to your point, Councilman Bell, you're right. There's a misconception because the houses are existing, they're not going substantially improved, I think Douglas, if I'm correct, means fifty percent or more.
Correct. So. If I could just add a couple of comments.
The comment about insurance premiums not being impacted is exactly correct. The FEMA, the flood maps have two very distinct roads. One is insurance, and, and we don't, we never deal with insurance. The other is building and enforcement, and really never do the two even talk to each other. So if the floods, if the flood zones are reduced, which they will, that's what the, that's what's gonna show up on elevation certificates, that's what's gonna be given to insurance agents, and, and any reduction that they would be entitled to, they would get regardless of whether or not you will require a, a higher standard. There was a question raised about what other communities are doing, and, and I can say that the city currently is requiring one additional foot of what we call freeboard. It's, it's an additional foot above the requirement. Other communities are already requiring two feet, and some communities, by virtue of the maps coming down, may be going up to three feet. Ours is a little bit different tact, and, and just for some background, the way we, so the requirement of fourteen feet, as I mentioned earlier, that is the minimum standard on the island today. So, and that standard's really on the back of the island, back in Forest Trail, you could be, you could build at thirteen feet above sea level, which is roughly about chest high. What this recommendation would do was it would, it would establish that chest-high requirement island-wide, but remember that on Ocean Boulevard right now, the requirement is, it's, in some places, twenty-one feet, which is like twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet above the ground. And this requirement, we are discussing, would, would be only chest-high. So I would say in most situations, it's a reduction from the requirement that we currently have on the books. However, it is gonna be, it's gonna be more restrictive than what the FEMA maps are proposing. So it's kind of a middle ground, I think. And one more quick point, I know it's been going on, but that elevation was chosen very specifically because it is one foot above the water that came in in Hugo. So it's not an arbitrary amount. We, we talked to surveyors, we located benchmarks. Jimmy was helpful in giving us kind of points of history where we were able to determine that that is where water came to, and we've added one foot just to get a good measure above that. So it's not an arbitrary height.
Do you have questions?
I, I do. One of the concerns I have on this is, what is the benefit to the city to make it an island, to make it fourteen foot? I mean, is there, is there cost savings, is there insurance?
Yeah, the, the real, you know, what we were striving for is, is, is a couple of things, but really it is being disaster resistant. You know, in the event of Hugo, the city staff, we all show up, a lot of buildings are, are bashed down, they're floated off their foundation. That, that level of work requires a tremendous amount of effort from the city. When you show up and, and the houses are elevated, the water came and went, you didn't have any damage, that is a much more disaster resilient community. So that's really what the, what the effort is. It's to, it's to ensure that after an event, the city's resources are not having to, to go towards, you know, dealing with houses that are knocked off foundations or, or.
But I don't have to say that, I mean, you, you'd have to agree with me perhaps, that the, the, national building codes have changed a lot since eighty-nine, would you say? I meant, in fact, that a lot of these houses that were moved off foundations were not allowed, I mean, were even strapped, they were set, they were gravity set, and were moved just for the fact that water moved them. I meant, so they had no foundation per se. But my other question is, I mean, why not approach this the same way as the city's approached it before, where you have, you have a minimum height and we only went above one foot? Why can't we take the new FEMA regulations, you know, apply them where they're supposed to be island-wide, and if you wanted to adjust it, adjust it up a foot, so no matter where you're at? I think you're, what you're doing is you're, you're really burning these other folks who have these smaller homes who can't, who, who may be above flood now with the new regulations, but you're forcing them to either tear down or invest a bunch of money into new infrastructure to raise the house, you know, so high, and then, you know, it's, so you're really, I, you're really forcing everybody to tear down these little ranch houses that we have here to build these, you know, these a lot bigger homes so we have the opportunity to try and salvage some of them.
That's not how I understand.
So, your first point you made is, is, is I think a good one when we looked at it, the idea of just adding additional footage to the FEMA requirement. The problem with that tact is huge portions of the island, like I said, second, third row that had feet of water into them are in, are out of the flood zone. row that had feet of water into them are, are out of the flood zone entirely. So there's no zone designated towards them. They're in what's called an X. So you can't add, there's no number to add two or three feet on.
Right.
So that's the reason why it was just a flat across the, across the island. And I think we all know that if it's, if still water came up to 12 or 13 feet, it was there across the island. So it wouldn't make much sense to drop it in some locations or not require elevation. And on, and, and your point about, and that's a valid point, older, smaller homes that they would be bound to the 50% rule where there's the possibility where if you were not to enact this code, they would not be bound to that 50% rule. But I think that there's logic in keep, if somebody's going to put a substantial amount of money into a house, I think there's logic in, in getting that house up off the ground and keeping, you know, keeping from a lot of resources going into a house that, that we know from experience will, will get flood damage if we had another Hurricane Hugo.
Right. And I, this is, I mean, one more comment. I mean, the fact that you look at some of these older crawl space J.C. Long homes, you know, I have a couple of them, and then they're, they're valued at $150,000 perhaps. I mean, the structure. So you can only put in, you know, $75,000 worth of work on, on that house. I mean, and that includes everything, basically, in order to stay under that 50% rule, you know? I think people would be willing to add a little bit more to it, to these homes if they, if, if they had the opportunity to be above flood and not be restricted by so much and, and just add on to those structures. So it just, I don't understand why, I mean, the federal government's, and then why not to, you know, you know, argue every federal code that comes out, you know, that they put on.
That may be a good idea. I find it interesting, Ryan, and the citizens' comments, which we all respect and appreciate, the notion that we're pushing back against the feds. When an independent sovereign state likes states' rights.
Right.
But now we're, and we have home rule, and we think that the government closest to the people knows the people, knows the issues best, and now we want to defer to the feds. Of course, each case is separate. But you know, our number one responsibility, our citizens, right, as a governmental body, is safety. And these items go directly to the citizen's safety. And I think you talk about, you know, some modest homes. I think we have to look at the bigger picture on the island and go for the sweet spot, not the most expensive homes and not the least expensive homes.
I'd like to look at this further, all, all four of these further, not these ordinances. We're not taking action tonight. I've got a lot to learn.
We have a motion and a second.
And that motion, just to clarify, is only on deferring the 2017-7.
Well, it was to send it back to the planning commission, correct?
Right. Needs to be amended.
Just for us to have more time.
Little more time. So that's the motion we've withdrawn at?
Well, we're not going to take any action.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. They're withdrawn?
Yeah.
Okay. So y'all like this part? I would say we do a motion to defer items A, B, C, and D. B, C, and D have to do with the sewer on Isle Palms. I do think we need to study that a little bit further before we take any motions on those.
Second.
I'm sorry.
For a discussion.
So a motion to defer A, B, C, and D. I make that as a motion.
Do it to a date certain? Respond to the February meeting or do you want to...
Let's do February.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Second then.
Okay. Discussion?
So I just want to clarify for council because I hadn't had a chance to say this yet. B, C, and D, we would like as a courtesy to send those back to the Isle Palms Water and Sewer to look at. We worked with them in the drafting of, of these, and we made some changes to them, but they have not seen the changes that are reflected in these versions. So as a courtesy, that is also something that needs to be done in the interim time.
Could we also know what their recommendations are?
You mean, when they come back?
If you come back with these or something different, do they support it? Do they endorse it? Do they oppose it?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Introduction, new bills, resolutions, proclamations. I promise this will be a fast one, as fast as I can read. Resolution for the city to join the federal litigation to challenge seismic testing and drilling in the Atlantic coastal waters. We have a resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Without reading so, we have a motion to, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, 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 wait. Discussion. Just a brief outline of what the resolution says, please.
Okay. Basically, what this is, is SCUP, South Carolina.
Environmental law.
Environmental law project. They are going to sue the federal government. They proceed forward with the offshore exploration for oil and gas. This is a nonprofit and they're going to do this at their own expense. It's not going to cost the city any money. The city of Charleston has signed on. Beaufort has signed on. I understand Folly Beach is addressing it tonight, as is, I think, Seabrook Island. So I would love to see all coastal communities band together on this motion.
It would mean that we are joining the lawsuit.
Yes. Which is like we did two years ago when we first came out and said that we were against it in the first place.
And here's the thing you're going to like the best.
Yeah.
It won't cost us a penny.
Okay, that's good enough of me.
When was the last time you heard the word litigation and not costing anything?
So just be careful of that. So that's good. So, yeah, we still got a motion. Anybody else?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see, what else we have here?
Just wanted to make some announcements.
A couple announcements, please, for everybody in the audience. February 1, citizens forum. February 10, Doggy Day at the park.
The rec. The rec.
At the park. And February 17, Special Olympics Polar Plunge in conjunction with Mount Pleasant Place and the Windjammer. I kind of challenge all council members to come join me in this plunge.
We'll be happy to watch you.
It's nothing like it was January 1st. So please, everybody come to that. And our next meeting is going to be at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 7, 27. Now, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance to receive legal advice regarding potential claims related to the rules of order and procedure which pertain to the conduct of council members, council, and committee meetings.
There's another one pointing at me.
That was a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.